Okay, we'll call the meeting order and ask you to stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the November fifteenth county commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cell phones. The meeting documents are in a white folder around here somewhere. If you are planning on speaking and you're not on the agenda, if you would just sign in in the back corner with your name and address. And when you come up to speak, then if you just give your name and just the county of residence instead of giving your whole address. Okay, with that, I would look for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed same say aye. Motion passes unanimously. Next is a consent agenda. Looking for a motion on the consent agenda.
Move for approval. Second with a comment.
I have a motion and a second with a comment. Commissioner Karski?
Last week, yourself, Carrie Benz, myself, and numerous others were in Tucson and one of the things, the whole purpose of the trip was, you know, not maybe sole purpose, but one of the primary purposes, reducing jail population. And we talked a lot about crisis teams, crisis intervention, and one of the reports on our consent agenda is the mobile crisis team. And the number of people that, you know, law enforcement gets called, people are having a mental illness crisis or just whatever's going on. Hundred and eighty-four out of two hundred and eleven people stayed home. And a lot of those people could have been taken to jail, hospital, et cetera. And just the whole purpose of our mobile crisis team and the good work that they do, just wanted to call that out. It was fresh in my mind with our recent trip to Tucson, so it was a just an important number to bring out and not, and it's not the number, it's the people that are helped. So just wanted to bring that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good point. I have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Hi Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. With that, we'll go on to regular business. Item number ten is authorize the chairman to sign a modification agreement between Minnehaha County and the Urban Institute for the Just Home Project. Carrie Benz, good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. Good morning. I am not Dr. Paige Miller, so I won't do her portion of this justice, but we are coming before you today just as more of an update, as well as the approval for the chair to be able to sign the updated agreement that we have with Urban Institute. We've embarked on a grant with them. It initially was known as the Equitable Home Demonstration Project, which has now changed the name per Urban Institute. They've changed that to Just Home. The only adjustment in this agreement is the date that we'll be working, the timeframe that we'll be working within. And that was really a compilation of all of the sites saying that the timeframes that we were given were just too tight. To be able to put together programming, establish housing opportunities, contracts, and even putting together plans for a PRI, trying to do that within so few months is just impossible. So really what's before you today is that agreement with just those edited dates. If you have questions about the grant, I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, I'll leave it up to you for questions.
Are there any questions from the commission? Are there any questions from the audience? Seeing nobody moving, okay. I would look for a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second with roll call vote, please.
Bender.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hi Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. And Dr. Paige, Dr. Miller was under the weather today, and so that's why Carrie substituted for her today, so. Item number eleven is a Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce Business Agriculture, Agribusiness Presentation by Holly. Good morning, Holly.
Good morning, commissioners. How are y'all? Okay, well, it's that annual time for me to come and present on the agribusiness pillar of the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce.
You want to introduce yourself, Holly, for the audience?
Yes, I am the vice president of member relations for the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce. And in a little bit, I'm going to introduce one of the newest members of our team. But before doing so, I'm going to give you a big synopsis of what the agribusiness pillar is. And you've all heard it before, but maybe there's something that we learned today that's a little different than what you've heard in the past. So diving right in, what is a pillar of the Chamber of Commerce? We have four pillars as a part of our chamber, and one of those is agribusiness. And pillars serve as initiatives or groups of people that come together to promote or advance an industry or a project or an initiative. And one of the longest standing pillars of the chamber is our agribusiness pillar. The agribusiness pillar advances and promotes the Sioux empire as an agricultural center through actions that provide a higher visibility of our industry. Now, what are those actions? You've heard them before, but here I go again. Our actions are best served through events. It's the most organic way for us to connect consumers to agriculture, as well as our community, to the greater good of our economic engine in the state. So some of our annual actions that we do is our fifth, we just had our fifth annual National Farmers' Day at the barn event that was held on October seventh. And two other actions or events would be our annual Sioux Empire Livestock Show, which I'm telling y'all right now to save the date for. That's going to be January twenty-fourth through the twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-three. And save the date for our fortieth annual Ag Appreciation Day, which is in conjunction with the Sioux Empire Fair annually, the Wednesday of the Sioux Empire Fair Week. So a little bit more about these three annual events. As I mentioned, we just celebrated our fifth annual National Farmers' Day. And the sole mission of this event is to bring our urban community to agriculture. And the most natural way to do that is holding this event at the Stockyards Ag Experience Barn, which many of you have been out to see that museum and are probably excited about what's to come with Wooster Plaza. So this year, we had a hundred and thirty in attendance. And some of the ways that we draw people, actually, the biggest way that we draw our community is hosting it on a Friday and making it family-friendly and having a pumpkin patch. To be honest, I think that pumpkin patch is what brings the most families to us. But once they get to us, we're able to educate them on where the pumpkin comes from and also be able to talk about some other farm-to-fork initiatives. And the Sioux Empire Livestock Show. We are about to kick off our seventieth annual. We've been preparing for the Sioux Empire Livestock Show for a couple of months now. Very excited about this year's. We have some new and exciting opportunities with our layout of the event within the expo building of the fairgrounds. And one of those exciting pieces is in an effort to maybe alleviate some of the dust in that center room of the expo building, we're moving our small species, which is our Market Hog Show, our Market Goat Show, and our Market Sheep Show into the north end of the expo building. So it's a, it's a new change for us, and we know that a lot is going to come with that in terms of logistics. But trying to utilize that building currently to the best of our ability and making sure that our visitors see that type of change and appreciate it as well. So in addition to those small species shows, we also host two open cattle shows, a Market Beef Show, and a whole entire day of, usually we have about six breeds represented of our purebred, purebred cattle shows and sales. And that's where bulls and heifers come in and they also get sold. So we have, today's actually our entry deadline for all of our consignors to get their entries in. And then we also host a four H and FFA livestock judging contest and a collegiate livestock judging contest. Both of those bringing in over five hundred students from around the nation. And we host a mayor's roundup and sell of champions, which I think most of you have attended in the past. That is also held on the north end of the expo building. We are having a little change there. It'll be on the east end of the north end of the expo building this year with that change that we're making to our small species shows. But we're very excited to be able to welcome nearly ten thousand visitors again this year to our week Sioux Empire Livestock Show. So again, that kicks off on the twenty-fourth and wraps up on Sunday, the twenty-ninth. And this is a fan favorite, I know, our fortieth annual Ag Appreciation Day luncheon. We had a really great attendance this past year. Weather was beautiful. Everything came together nicely and we had over twenty-two hundred in attendance. So our goal is most likely going to be twenty-five hundred for this next year, something to reach towards. During COVID, we kind of went closer to that one thousand mark, and it's nice to have us hit over two thousand again in attendance. The sole purpose of this one is to thank our farmers, and I think all of you have participated in some type of way, so you see how appreciated they feel. So in addition to these annual actions as the agribusiness pillar of the Chamber of Commerce, we also do our best efforts in further educating our city with ag education and other opportunities and initiatives that we can be a part of that further highlight, again, that economic engine of our state. So it's been really fun being a part of the agribusiness pillar for the past five and a half years. Cannot believe it's already been that long. And as some of you might know, two years ago, I stepped into a new role. And so with that, it's so exciting for us to be able to strengthen the team of the agribusiness pillar at the Greater Sioux Falls Chamber of Commerce. And with that, I'm going to introduce Brooke Hendricks. She only started on October twenty-fourth. So I, I think next year it'll be her giving this presentation to all of y'all. But I'm going to let Brooke introduce herself now. We're so happy to have a team surrounding our ag efforts at the chamber.
Thank you, Holly. Good morning, commissioners, and good morning, audience. My name is Brooke Hendricks. I'm originally from New York Mills, Minnesota. So it's about north central Minnesota. I'm a SDSU grad, so I'm a hardcore Jack Rabbit. After graduation, yeah. After graduation, I took an internship at the State Fair of Texas where I really dove more into the role of what I want to do in a dream career. I saw the position reopened back up at the chamber here, and I'd worked with Holly before as an intern, and I knew that this was not only an area I wanted to come back through from going to college, but I also wanted to work under Holly and her team and really help promote agriculture within a city and a state that really fully backs agriculture as a whole. Thank you for having us today.
Thanks, Brooke.
And with that, we're open to answer any questions that y'all might have.
Commissioner Karski.
So you're moving the smaller animals to the north, and where are the rabbits going to be?
Great question, Commissioner Karski. This will be our third year without the rabbit show.
Really?
At the expo building. Yes, sir.
I usually try to get there with my granddaughters because, I mean, for the citizens of the county, the city, I mean, it's a great place to go. It doesn't cost anything to take your kids. You get to mingle with the younger kids and watch them play, or not play, but lead their larger animals around and how they work with it. So I'd encourage everybody to go there, children, grandchildren, if you're a city slicker or not, and you've never been around the ag community. It's a great way to, to meet those people and introduce your kids to what ag is.
It's free.
And just because we don't have the rabbits, those pigs sure are fun to be around. So come out on Thursday. That'd be a fun one for your grandchildren to see.
Other questions or comments?
I just want to thank you ladies for coming and thank the chamber for the work that they do to support agriculture in our community, knowing that that is extremely important to the state of South Dakota. It's not just the city of Sioux Falls and the wonderful things we have to offer here. It's supporting our ag community. So thank you, ladies.
Thank you all for the continued support, too. Appreciate it.
With that, we'll move on to item number twelve, which was a Sioux Falls Area Humane Society Presentation. Cory Beatty.
I'm Cory Beatty from the Sioux Falls Humane Society. I also have Kaylee Har here with me today. As all of you know, we had Andy A. strike for many, many years. She did retire, and Kaylee has taken her place as the animal welfare supervisor. So both of us will be speaking a little bit today. Just wanted to give an overview a little bit about the Humane Society. Most of you know that we are our own shelter here in Sioux Falls. We are not a part of another organization at any time and have never been. Our contracts, we have about twenty-one contracts outside the city of Sioux Falls. We also take care of the animals that are inside the city of Sioux Falls. Now, this year has been crazy. We have taken in probably an influx of animals, sometimes between eight and nine hundred a month. It has been just crazy. We don't know really why. It's not about a return about COVID. It's not anything like that. But we do see a, a large increase, you know, partly probably because of the population. Also because people are not fixing their animals, and we need to get that word out, and we are trying to do so. We do fix everything now that comes out of the shelter. There's not a pet that goes out that is not spayed or neutered. And that is a cost on us, but it is very important to do. So before anything else with Kaylee, I just wanted to thank you for your ability to be able to help you guys out in the county. We have really enjoyed our contract. We get to meet lots of people, don't we? We get to meet all kinds of people, and it's, you know, it's a great thing. The people in the county are very caring for their animals, and we do appreciate that. You see things across the country that are just horrible. And we have been lucky to have our team go out and actually educate, so that's been very important to us. So I'm going to turn it over to Kaylee to give you some numbers, just specifically for Minnehaha County and let you know kind of what she does and what we'll be doing here in the future for Minnehaha County.
Yeah, hi. So as Cory said, my name is Kaylee Har. I'm the Animal Welfare Manager now and our Senior Humane Officer. So just to touch on Minnehaha County in general, comparatively speaking, I sat down and pulled the numbers of two thousand and twenty-one to twenty-two, just year to date through September thirtieth, we've seen close to a fifteen percent increase in general call volume. And that also is going to include all of the animals that come with that fifteen percent as well. Year to date in two thousand and twenty-two, we've had about two hundred and forty-nine calls, give or take. We have a lot of here and there's around the shelter. Minnehaha County, thirty-six bite reports, eighty-six stray calls, and two hundred and seven animals through September thirtieth. I could tell you already just where we're at in November. We've probably exceeded that by another hundred and fifteen, hundred and twenty animals from this county alone. It's been rapidly increasing, kind of unprecedented to what we typically see around this time of year. But we're trucking along. One other thing I will say, so she had mentioned about twenty-one contracts, and this year we actually brought back thirty-six total contracts. So we are contracted out to many, many different areas. So I want to thank, you know, all of our deputies and everybody that we work with in Minnehaha County for being patient with us officers, because there was only two of us for a significant amount of time. But we are bumped up to four now with Andy having stepped down and me replacing her. We have three other officers now. We have Elliot, Adriana, and Taryn. Two are still in training, but hoping that that will improve our call volume for you guys and for all of our other contracts as well. But that's really all I had for you guys, so.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the commission? Commissioner Bender.
So you mentioned about Andy's retirement, but I believe you might be retiring.
I'm transitioning.
I know what you mean.
I'm not really retiring, but I am transitioning, you know. As all of you know, I've been there for quite a while, and I love it. I love it, love it. But, you know, I'm not, you know, that twenty-year-old person anymore running around, so it's kind of nice to be able to maybe cut back a little bit, so. Yes, it is going to be. I will still help them a little bit with some fundraising, which will be good, but it'll be more on a outside basis than an inside basis. They are doing a search right now for my replacement, and they will have an interim exec during that time. So pretty seamless, I hope. So thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Congratulations on your transition type.
Thank you very much. Yes, that's what I call it.
That's right. I, I think that's all. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Item number thirteen is Southeast Behavioral Healthcare Presentation. Chris Graham. Good morning, Chris.
Good morning. Good morning. I'm Chris Graham, CEO of Southeastern Behavioral, and thank you for having us here today. I also want to tell you thank you for your continued support of our agency. Last year, we provided over ten million in services back to the residents of Minnehaha County. With those services, we include case management, counseling for groups and individuals, psychiatry, and we do assessments for mental health and CD. So we are still going strong and reaching out to different parts of the county to help provide services. And today I have two new people with me to provide on two different programs. And I'm going to introduce first Kristy Luth, who will talk about our early childhood program.
Thank you. My name is Kristy Luth. I work at Southeastern Behavioral Healthcare, and I am the Clinical Director of our Children and Counseling Services. And I am also the co-project director of our South Dakota Early Childhood Mental Health Collaborative. What that is, is a five-year grant, and we are happily in year five. We've done a lot of work over the last four-plus years with the overall goals of this early childhood grant, which is a SAMSA grant. We really have three main goals here. We want to increase our development and screening of mental health referrals and providing some more evidence-based emotional learning for our ICAP Head Start children. We are in the ICAPS throughout Sioux Falls or throughout our rural areas in South Dakota. I believe we go to fourteen different sites, and so able to provide education to the teachers as well as providing some of that service delivery, providing play-based services. Which leads into our next goal is raising that awareness for that need to provide and strengthen the workforce so we can offer those services throughout the state of South Dakota. Prior to our grant, we had eight individuals throughout the state that had their registered play therapist credential. The last stats that we pulled, we have over thirty. And so that's really exciting that we were able to strengthen that workforce. We've done that through curriculum, and individuals are gaining all of the, the education that they need to obtain that registered play therapy credential and then get out there and provide that play therapy service. And the piece that Southeastern really aims to provide in collaboration with SDSU, who provides that education, and with our Head Start ICAP area, is us helping to provide that early screening. So we use a DEVERO Protective Strength-Based Assessment on the children that we provide services to through ICAP, and we use that to help identify if there is an area of need, and then we're able to step in and provide that play-based therapy. The funding from the grant has also helped to support added, added trainings for play therapy, including sand tray, fair play, and then providing that education on diagnostic. I'm also here with Jen Johnson, who is going to do an overview of the JJRI services, and she is our JJRI coordinator.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Jen Johnson. I'm also from Southeastern Behavioral Healthcare. I am the JJRI coordinator. I'm also the IFS Intensive Family Services Coordinator. I'm also the FFT Site Supervisor and Therapist, and that is my favorite position. FFT Functional Family Therapy, we receive referrals from attorneys, from probation, from Department of Corrections, from parents, from private practice therapists, from, let's see, schools. We receive referrals from all different kinds of people. And typically, the, the FFT families benefit from services for about three to five months. Parents need to be in the room. Children are present. They are referred for reasons like truancy and substance use and youth and parent conflict and parent reunification and aggressive behaviors, mental health issues. So we provide different kinds of therapy modalities within that FFT model to be able to work on reducing conflict, to be able to improve communication patterns and behavioral patterns within the family. It's intense. It's an evidence-based model. And since inception in two thousand and sixteen with Southeastern, we have served, I don't know, close to four hundred families. Our groups that we have are the MRT, the Moral Reconnaissance Therapy. That is a twelve-step group. And in that group, it takes about, I would say probably about three to four months for our youth to be able to successfully complete. They work on being able to make some better decisions based on morals, based on community service, based on being able to think a little bit more about being a good citizen. And so we work with kids on a weekly basis and, and then celebrate with them when they're able to complete that twelve-step program. Our ART group, the Aggression Replacement Training, that is a group for middle school and high school students. We have two separate groups running. And we work on social skills. We work on moral reasoning skills, and we also work on reducing aggressive behaviors. So we meet twice a week for a total of three hours for ten weeks with youth to be able to help them successfully complete the program. Those are all both evidence-based models, too. Any questions about those services that we offer?
Thank you, Jen. Is there any questions from the audience? Questions from the commissioner? Commissioner Bender.
This is all really interesting. I don't know a lot about most of this. I'm curious about the Functional Family Therapy that you said was your favorite, I believe.
It is.
You talked about how many families that you had served. I was curious what kind of results. Sorry. I'm curious if you, what kind of results you've seen from that. Do you track people after they've completed that program? And I'm just curious what, what kind of evidence you have that it's being beneficial.
Great question. The Division of Behavioral Health is the one who tracks all the data, however we're exposed to all that. So a couple of different things. We've been able to reduce the rate of recidivism for those to be able to be in other services. We've improved the ability to, I would say, to be able to reduce truancy to some degree, being able to work on those relational functions within a home. They're able to generalize some of those skills into other areas of their life. So yes, we have data that shows that there is a reduced rate of recidivism. We have assessments that we take at the start of services and then at the end of services to monitor anxiety, depression, angry or disruptive behaviors. We also monitor if there's any other services that could be beneficial for them. So in our last phase of our model, there's five phases, we're able to connect with them with some community resources if there's a need. Sometimes there is, sometimes there isn't.
Thank you. Additional questions? All right. Thank you, Jen. Thank you, ladies from Southeast Behavioral for partnering with us, and thank you for your presentation today. With that, item number fourteen is Consider Resolution to Extend Minnehaha County Ambulance Licenses Through December two thousand and twenty-three. Jason Gierman, good morning, Jason.
Morning. Jason Gierman, Emergency Management, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. Basically, we recently had a ambulance meeting with the, all the, all the various ambulances and looked at the map. And with the growth of Sioux Falls, we felt that it's probably time to redraw it. There hasn't been any gap in coverage or like that, but we felt this was time. And then there's been some changes in the Crooks area. And if you're aware, that Crooks Falls within MedStar's zone, however, Crooks is now contracted with Del Rapids. So we felt there's some, that should be taken into account, and there's some growth south of Crooks. And obviously, east of Sioux Falls, there's been quite a bit of expansion. So I'm here to, for you to consider that resolution. I don't remember if I need to read the resolution or, no.
I don't think you need to read it. No, you do not need to read that.
Okay.
All right. Is there any questions from the audience? Any questions from the commission?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Bender.
Jason, so have the ambulance providers been told about this, and do they have any issues?
No, they're actually for, actually, nobody actually wants to expand their territory. However,
That's a change.
We have to look at, you know, what's best for the county.
Right.
Especially in that Crooks area, you know, when we've got the varying ambulances going through there, what's more efficient.
Okay. I'd look for a motion.
We'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Hi Berger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Item number fifteen is authorize the Director of Equalization to enter into a professional service agreement with Schinder, oh my goodness, Geospan LLC for Beacon Software. Chris Lilla, I should have let you say that.
Yeah, Schneider Geospatial.
Schneider.
Yeah, this is, I'm Chris Lilla, Director of Equalization. This is a project I brought before you last year that we've got put in the budget this year. We are very excited. My staff is very excited to get this. Another exciting opportunity that has come aboard that we did, we're not aware of is that Lincoln County is, has already contracted with Schneider to present Beacon down there. So Beacon is actually jumping ahead of the curve on that with anticipation of us entering into contract that now when the public or any user wants to look at property, property values, property taxes, they'll be able to have access less phone calls, less traffic to our office for starters. That's a plus and a win. They'll be able to get the information at home at their convenience anytime they want. Basic information. If they want other detailed information of the sketches, photos of their property, how many bedrooms are in the house, basement finish, all of that stuff, then there's a small fee that comes with that, and that fee is used to recoup our, our expenses to serve this. But with Lincoln County coming on board now, I've already spoken with, with Beacon.
But with Lincoln County coming on board now, I've already spoken with Beacon, if you're in Minnehaha County's Beacon site, and you pan the map south of Fifty-seventh, it's going to be seamless, you'll be able to go right into the Lincoln County atmosphere seamlessly within Sioux Falls City, so that is something I was unaware of last year, and I am pretty excited about that, I mean, what a great opportunity for our citizens, especially if Sioux Falls, to not have to leave a site, go to another site, to bounce back and forth, it will just transition right across, so, very exciting. So, we're asking for your approval to allow us to enter into contract, and look forward to getting this, they're excited to get rolling. November, the end of November, their costs were increasing, so there was kind of a push to get this, get this going, but we're going to be working on this, some connections through IT and with the city of Sioux Falls GIS now, but hopefully, somewhere mid-January, we can maybe go live, my ultimate goal is March first, to have our twenty-three assessment data all out there and live, with updated photos where we have them, all these will be visible, things like that, so, it's a very good opportunity for the county and for the taxpayers, and for our office.
Thanks, Chris. Is there anybody in the audience with a question? Okay, commission questions? I'm thinking it's going to help your office when it comes to equalization boards, because people will not be calling you to find out the information, they now can go online to compare themselves to their neighbors.
Right.
And look up the values in their neighborhoods, so.
Yeah, and it's similar to our public GIS that we have now, but this one here, our public, you get, you get a piece here, you get a piece there, you get a piece there, this seems it all together, so, we will have all of our arms-length sales mapped on there, what those sale prices were, what our assessed values were, what the grades of those homes are, the ages of those homes, the styles, so now, when they, when they go to their parcel, they can look right at their parcel, and look right around the map, and see all the homes that sold around them, what they sold for, and hopefully, people understand and realize that their values are based on the sales that are occurring within their neighborhoods, and that is affecting us to increase, decrease, or leave their values where they're at, so, it's all, it's all, it's all based on, on information that buyers and sellers tell us we need to do with the market, so.
Yep, just increase our transparency. With that, I would look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Again.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously, thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Item number sixteen is Authorize the State's Attorney's Office to Enter Into Agreement With Thomson Reuters For the Westlaw Software. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners, Drew DeGroot from the State's Attorney's Office. This actually is an existing contract that we have with Thomson Reuters, it's a five-year contract, what we did is, the State's Attorney wanted the contract to begin at the beginning of the year, to kind of help align with our budget process, instead of being a transition of mid-year, so, really, all this is doing is, is just changing the start date of the contract, the existing contract will stay the same, but we actually get a benefit of having about a year and a half on the one-year term, instead of just the one year, so we actually got a benefit of the reduced price for an additional about five months, so, ask for your approval.
Any questions? Questions from the public? Okay, looking for a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And now, there's an opportunity for public comment, is there anyone that wants to speak about anything that is not on the agenda today?
Madam Chair, we have the two successful candidates for county commission here, I think, they ought to come up and, and wave at the camera.
We have three.
I think that's a good idea, come on up and say hello, you can at least state your names, and, our candidates, no longer candidates, future commissioners will be taking office on January third.
Thanks, Commissioner Barth.
You, you guys can decide between the two of you, who will take his role of putting people on the spot.
Yeah, that is, that has become a tradition, Commissioner Barth, but, Joe Kipley, thank you, Commissioner Barth, and all the commissioners have been good colleagues and mentors, working with you over the past year, learning a lot, and looking forward to working with you on the other side of the daisies.
Jen Blindberg, again, very excited, also thankful for this opportunity, looking forward to getting started.
And they will be replacing Commissioner Barth and myself, who both decided not to run this year.
We can't be replaced.
Oh, they will be stepping into shoes, hopefully they fit.
Big shoes.
Out of fairness, shouldn't Commissioner Benega get an opportunity, he also won.
Commissioner Benega won.
Please.
Been around forever.
And happy to have him back. Thank you to the voters who took time to vote on our election day, and beforehand, and put qualified people into position of the commission, this is an important job for us, too, so. Any other public comments? With that, I would go to commission liaisons, and I have Commissioner Karski talked a little bit about our trip to Tucson, Arizona, there was a large group of us, came back with some, I think, good ideas, they kind of put us through the wringer of seeing a lot of different places and a lot of different things, and giving us a lot of suggestions. One of the things that we were really targeting, I think, to look at, at least what the project I may be a little bit involved in, was warrant resolution court, and so we did talk a lot about what the warrant resolution court looks like, and will be working with the State's Attorney's Office, and continue to work with courts to see if it's anything that would work in Minnehaha County safely, so that was important. They have a lot of, they have three different organizations, I think it was three, that function similar to our link, some of the things that were kind of surprising were they call them their no wrong doors, and law enforcement drops them off, and we actually witnessed this, it takes law enforcement about five minutes to drop them off, they have no law enforcement in the building, they're, all of their staff are trained to be able to handle people who may be out of control, either mentally or with drugs or alcohol, and their, their system works very well, but I would guess they are staff probably better than we are at this point. We did ask staff ratios, didn't get a specific number, so that's something we'll have to dig into a little bit more, but, it was a very good conference, and I think we came away with a lot of information that will be useful going forward with our SJC Safety and Justice Challenge Grant work, so. Commissioner Karski, did you have anything else to add on that?
No, I would echo the comments, it was a very quick trip, left Tuesday after work, was home Thursday about midnight, and so, quick turnaround, but a lot of great information, and I actually had about a twenty-minute phone call with Bill Early, our executive director of the link, kind of shared with him some of the notes that I took this morning, and, you know, it's all about having the right people, the wrong people in jail, or not having the wrong people in jail, and jailing people that should be jailed, and, you know, the first person or first entity called, if somebody's having a mental health crisis, a lot of times it's law enforcement, and just what law enforcement has to be trained in and be able to do in crisis intervention, a lot of it is drug, you know, with mental illness, self-medication unintentionally, most, for the most part, you know, the drug and alcohol involvement with mental health issues, so, it was all very interesting, and, you know, just things that we can look at doing on a much smaller scale. Pima County is a population of about, I think, one-point-two million, roughly, just south of the Phoenix area, so, yeah, they do have more robust programs than what we could afford or could do, but, just some smaller ideas, even if we involve community health with our link, because we have a second floor, and maybe having community health providers there once a week, like they do in their facility, so, some, some good ideas, things that we can look at incorporating, it's baby steps, and it's all about getting there that way, it doesn't have to be huge jumps, so.
No other liaison reports, then I would look for non-actionable commission discussion, I have a couple of things.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth?
I just want to comment, and previously I couldn't because I was running for office, I, I really appreciate the vote of the citizens of Sioux Falls to allow additional agricultural activity in our community. I thought that the proposed plan was totally wrong. What do we have in Minnehaha County? We have our children, which we export, we have our agricultural products, which we export, and this is an opportunity for value-added, and, you know, I would also resist efforts to shut down a distillery that took corn and made it into whiskey, it's a value-added, I mean, and, and I would, just a final point here, I went to boarding school one year, and the centerpiece of my school was the Armor Estate, Armor Meat Company, which made tens of millions in World War I, and they built their main house for fifteen million dollars in nineteen-nineteen, it's a heck of a place, and that was, became eventually our, our, our boarding school, and, you know, we had people lived in the gatehouse, and, you know, not quite the stables, but we had football fields, practice football fields, baseball fields, all on this palatial estate, which, at one point, an American multimillionaire built. We had imported marble from Europe that, on our staircase, and, you know, I think that these, I think that was the key issue that converted the vote in our, in our city, was the, the palatial estate that was objecting to the natural activities of our community. Anyway, thank you, Sioux Falls, and let's hope this doesn't happen again.
Thanks, Commissioner Barth. I have a couple of things, and one, just kind of ask you what your thoughts are about putting on our next agenda discussion on December twenty-third, there are several government entities that are not working on December twenty-third, and so I would like to put it on next week's agenda to have that discussion, just wondering if you're all okay with that? Okay, all right. Direct staff to put that on, and then my next thing is, you probably remember the Financial Action Network that we had in two thousand seventeen, and Commissioner Karski chaired that, and so I have asked him to chair a new group, which we'll be getting together in two thousand twenty-three. In our two thousand seventeen fan group, we had eleven members, Tyler has reached out to all of them, five of those members have indicated that they are still interested in participating in the two thousand twenty-three fan group, four of those members have indicated they're not interested in moving forward, so we would like to have kind of a similar total, so we need about six more members, and so I'm just asking if you have some suggestions for that Financial Action Network group, that you would give those to Tyler, maybe in the next week, is that what you're thinking? In the next week, and then they'll just kind of go through and see what looks like will fit with this group, and make some reach-outs to some of those people, so I think, so we can move forward with that. Tyler or Carol, do you want to just give the audience just a little overview of what the financial network did for us last time?
Sure, the Financial Advocacy Network, or FAN, as we refer to it as, was a concept that Commissioner Karski brought forward, not shortly after you came to the commission, I believe. We've seen the school districts in Sioux Falls go through and do that, it's been very valuable, it is people who really know and understand numbers, and we brought them in, and spent a lot of time helping them, taking them through how we operate, what our, what our opportunities are, what our challenges are, and just putting that plan together at this point. We're talking about bringing it back again, as we look at the next ten years.
Yep, so, we'll move forward with that. I don't have any other non-actionable commission discussion, Carol, did you have something you wanted to add?
I just wanted to look ahead, because between now and the first of the year is going to go really, really fast, and you meet next week, there is no meeting on November twenty-ninth, because that is the fifth Tuesday, I do want to give you a heads-up then on December sixth, expect a full day, full morning, you will start with Building Committee that morning, and we'll be talking about property insurance, our annual on that, and then highway cold storage, and then we'll be doing, we've got quite a few things that are already getting scheduled for the December sixth commission meeting, so, I would expect we'll have a full morning on the sixth.
Bring your lunch, no, just kidding.
December thirteenth, you do not meet, that's the second Tuesday you will not meet, however, on December twelfth, you have on your calendar that we will be holding a meeting with the WH Lions Task Force on the Market and Economic Study, we'll be meeting in the training room. And then, December twentieth is a commission meeting, after that, we will be holding a recognition of, of our outgoing commissioners, Commissioner Heiburger and Commissioner Barth at that time, and December twenty-seventh is the last meeting of the day, there's a lot of housekeeping that takes place at the last meeting of the day, so, Auditor's Office is working with department heads on that, and then, the organizing meeting of the year is January third, at which time we will be swearing in Commissioner, the upcoming commissioners, Joe Kipley, Jen Blindberg, and, is it re-oeath of office, I'm not quite sure what the correct term is, for Commissioner Benega, so.
Whatever you want to call it.
It's a, it's a busy two months, that we have a lot of things for.
We do, and we're throwing Christmas and Thanksgiving in there, too.
Thank you.
All right, with that, I would look for a motion to recess for, oh, excuse me.
Just have one input item, and I, I apologize, because I don't remember exactly where these are at, but I've been getting a number of calls about the CO2 Pipeline meetings that have not been publicly announced evidently, and they're going to be in Canton, Flandre, and Sioux Falls next week, and they're, all the meetings are at five-thirty, and the only one I remember off the top of my head is the one in Sioux Falls, I believe, is at the Ram Coda, the one in Canton, it seems like it's at, I'm not sure, but I'll send the information out, because there's a lot of confusion on who should be attending these, and I think it's important that the people who are affected, and maybe even live in that area, need to know what's going on.
Do we even know what day of the week yet? That's information at home, or?
I'm pretty sure it's the twenty-first is at Canton, the twenty-second's at Flandre, and the twenty-third is in Sioux Falls, all at five-thirty, but I will confirm that.
Where could we post that if the public wants to know? Thoughts?
We could add that on the calendar.
Okay, we'll add it on to the, and the, and the calendar's on the commission website, so if you are happy to be looking for it, that's where we will post those, save your phone call to our commission office. Okay? Then I will look for a motion to recess, and we'll say ten minutes, so at ten o'clock, we will meet for exec session in, in the training room, next door.
My motion.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We're done.
Here's our cliff.